This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I would like to call the Joint Village Board and Finance and Personnel Committee to order for Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Roll call, please.
I'll start with Finance and Personnel Committee. Chris Zerbal.
Here.
Kelly Service.
Here.
Tracy Flukie.
Here.
Allison Burnett.
Here.
And Tom Selk.
Here.
Then the Village Board, President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul will be online. Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
The legislative body of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand is one nation under God, indivisible, with the reigning justice of all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed, nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Are there any comments from the public not on tonight's agenda? Any comments from the public on items not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're moving on. Number six, action items. Six A, Consider Discuss Act on amended agreements for onsite clinic with Bellin Health. Joel.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. This item coming before you tonight just basically killed two birds with one stone with the Joint Finance and Personnel Committee and Village Board meeting. We have an onsite workplace clinic that we've had enjoyed with Bellin Health for a number of years. Every year or every two years, they seek an amendment to that agreement to increase the overall wage cost for possibly the nurse practitioner, the onsite wellness coaches, physical therapists, and things of that nature. They have approached the village in accordance to the agreement with a proposed price increase for just the nurse practitioner, so that's Marissa, who's our general practitioner in the clinic. They are proposing a $5 per hour increase in her rate. There are other elements in the agreement that are bolded. Those are just the individuals that actually serve the workplace clinic, so those are bolded. Any other positions that are in the agreement don't necessarily directly serve the onsite clinic, but they're just listed there in the event that we do have that service provided to us. All told, the annual increase will be roughly $1,645. That's based on the number of hours that Marissa typically works over the course of the year for the onsite clinic. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendment and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Joel, this is a joint agreement between us along with the school district. Am I correct with Bellin?
That is correct. Yep, so this is a joint on-place clinic. We have a clinic--
Aren't they also getting the $1,000?
That is--
So we split that?
It's more based on the number of hours. So that $1,600 is based on the amount of hours that Marissa works for the village's onsite clinic. The school district's increase in aggregate form is likely larger than that $1,600 because she does more hours at the school than at the village.
Okay.
Yep.
But village employees, if need be, could always go up to there to go to the clinic as well. Am I correct, up at the high school?
At the high school, there are other clinics that the school district has only for school district employees. So if it's hours associated with village service, then it gets billed to the village. If it's specific to the school district, it would go to the school district.
Okay, very well.
Yep.
Took the words right out of my mouth, Jay. That's what I was going to ask.
You're welcome.
Make a motion to approve the amended agreement for the onsite clinic with Bellin Health as proposed.
Now, second.
Motion and a second to approve the amended agreement for the onsite clinic with Bellin Health. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Six B, it's a really, really big show. It's the 2024 budget. Before we start, I would like to thank Greg and Joel for doing an excellent job. Lot of meetings going into this. We started out with a very large deficit, and they were able to get it down to a balanced budget. I want to thank all of the department heads for all their hard work on it, too. You know, everybody threw a lot of stuff into our budget. We tried to accommodate what we could, and thank you all for being very congenial. So, thanks. With that, it's your show.
All right, I will start us off, and then Greg will kind of walk us through the detail of the budget. I do want to echo Mary's sentiments. I want to thank Greg, his team at Finance and the Finance Department, specifically Sherry Halsted. She's been a welcome addition to the department and has been very helpful in our efforts and process to get things organized, if you will, and get them in a path that aligns with our strategic plan. I also want to thank the department heads as well and all the staff that work with each department head to produce the budget. Just to kind of give you a brief overview of the process, obviously, a schedule is prepared and produced earlier about midpoint of the year. That information is then conveyed to the village board and department heads. Department heads are able to put together a budget where they feel that their needs are best met, and they submit that budget to finance. And then at that point, the process begins with Mary, myself, and Greg, and Sherry going through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. This year, all told, we had about $1 million that we needed to adjust or modify from the proposals that were presented to us. That could be in the form of a variety of different things: a reduction in expenditures or costs, and reallocation or adjustment of revenues, or getting creative about moving things between different types of funds. All told, and you'll hear myself repeat this statement multiple times, the budget that is presented to you tonight is balanced. So theoretically, if you want to adopt the budget as it's presented to you tonight, and we can just be done in three minutes, you can do that as well. With that, there's obviously some challenges that come with that. And we do that intentionally because that makes any changes deliberate and purposeful versus just making cuts to make cuts, right, in order to make the budget balanced. Now, you can focus on what are the priorities that you have as it relates to the budget. The budget itself, in my opinion, is the single most policy action an elected body can make. This really describes in full detail the program of services that you are going to provide to your constituency, and to what value and to what degree. So I think if there's any single action that is important for the village to really take consideration of, it's the budget process. So with that, I'll walk through a presentation, just kind of introducing you to the budget, and provide a high-level overview of where things stand today. First thing I always touch on each year is just talking about what the purpose of the actual budget is. So for Chris, for example, and no offense to Chris, this is his first go at it, and he hasn't gone through a municipal budget process before, so why do we do this? There's three main components. The first is we have to meet statutory requirements. So under state law, municipal governments are required to have a budget, to adopt a tax levy, and in addition to that, the state law requires that budget to be balanced. So unlike the federal government, we cannot spend to our hearts' content and rack up piles and piles of debt. We have to have a balanced budget. And in addition to that, we have a thing called levy limits, and so as a result of that, we are also limited by the state as to how much taxes we can generate through property taxes to support those operations. In addition to that, statutory law requires certain provisions of services that municipalities must provide. If you've been around long enough, you've heard the term unfunded mandates. That's exactly what these things are. Things like providing elections. We have to provide local elections, so that's an expense the local municipality provides. Fire and rescue-related services, emergency management, property assessments, stormwater management, snow and ice control. Those are all services that must be rendered. To what degree they're rendered, that's, of course, up to the liberty and discretion of the local governing body, but we still have to provide a basic level of service. The second purpose of the budget is to provide a degree of transparency. So this is a pretty big document, and there's a lot of numbers in there that provide a high-detail element of spending by function and service. So you can find all the revenues by major source and category, and all the expenditures by major function and service level. Beyond that, you can see what you've done over the last current fiscal period and the year prior, so there is historical data there as well. There's information in the budget as it relates to the organizational structure and functions of the services and departments that are rendering it. And then by and large, and we'll talk about this in great detail tonight, it talks about human resources and the personnel costs related to staffing, compensation, benefits, things of that nature. And then finally, the goal really is to help facilitate decision-making and prioritization, right? It brings all of those things under one umbrella, and then the individuals that are making that collective decision can then take things and move them in or out, expand or contract, and it really should be based on the needs of the community and the goals of which you've described. So things like public safety, capital infrastructure, whether we repair, replace, or add new. Talks about economic development, overall financial and fiscal planning, because we talk about fund balances and things of that nature in the budget. And then hopefully, this process also can be viewed as a continual improvement process. So year over year, you're refining it, you're retooling it, you're trying to find efficiencies and effectiveness in your service delivery. Tonight, in your budget book, you'll see kind of three different funds that we'll discuss in, to some degree. The first is the governmental funds section of the budget. By and large, the largest fund there is called the general fund. That is where we pretty much spend about 90% of our time and attention, because that is the fund that really drives property taxes. And that one is the one that ultimately delivers the bulk of services to our citizens. We'll also talk about special revenue funds, debt service funds, and capital project funds. Of those governmental funds, they are predominantly funded and sourced by property taxes. Now, that isn't the only revenue source that supports those governmental operations, but it is the predominant source. The next fund are the enterprise funds, so that is our water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. These are called enterprise funds, primarily because user fees are the predominant source of revenues, so they act much like a business, right? Revenues in should equal revenues out. There's the capitalization of assets to a larger degree than within the general fund, so by and large, these really act like a business. And then finally, there are the internal service funds. For us, we're really focused on our medical dental insurance fund. That is the fund that is used to support our health insurance program for our employee pool, as well as our vehicle and operations maintenance fund, or vehicle and fleet fund. These two funds, again, are internal service funds, so generally speaking, they are supported by fund transfers. And what I mean by that is there's some type of transfer from another fund, whether it be a governmental fund or an enterprise fund, to support those. So there are chargebacks to the general fund to support premiums for health insurance, or the depreciation of a vehicle or fleet item back to those general funds. As I mentioned, when we put the budget together, we really take into consideration the village's overall strategy, and part of that strategy is our mission and vision. And our mission is to deliver superior services for all, making Ashwabanon a community of choice to live, work, and play. And so we recognize that when we put together our budget. We also recognize that in the long term, our vision is to create Ashwabanon as an inclusive, attractive, and award-winning community, featuring safe neighborhoods, thriving businesses, and exciting cultural opportunities. We'll do this by completing the six strategic directives that the board has adopted as part of our overall strategic plan. Those are enhancing our quality of life, securing public health and safety, improving and maintaining our public infrastructure and facilities, supporting community and economic development, striving for organizational and financial excellence, and providing effective communication and engagement. I hope, as you go through the budget document, you can see in earnest the effort that is being made to ensure that we are meeting our mission, working towards the accomplishment of the overall vision of the community, and really targeting those six key strategic directives. Now, let's talk big picture. Here we are at about a 30,000-foot level. As I mentioned before, the general fund is predominantly funded through the use of property taxes, or I should say governmental funds are. And that is really the primary focus that many of you as elected officials review, because that's the concern that constituents likely address with you, right? What are my taxes going to look like this year? The 2023 property tax levy, and remember, this is budget year 24, but their property taxes paid in 2023 are for 2023 payable in '24, are broken down as shown on this slide. The general fund, again, is the largest driver of property taxes at just over $11 million. We do have property taxes that support our capital projects fund. That $750,000 supports our mill and pave program that we have been building over the course of several years, and has been very successful in our ability to maintain our road infrastructure. The debt service fund is going towards any general obligation debt that is not directly tied to a previous referendum, which we'll talk in a moment. So if we've gone out and bonded for projects or other capital acquisitions, that would be our obligation on principal and interest payments for this fiscal year. That tax is required by law to be generated. So even if you decide that you want to eliminate all property taxes in the village of Ashwabanon, you would still need to levy enough taxes to cover your general obligation debt. In addition to that, there is $1.5 million set aside for referendum bonding. That's directly associated with the community pool, the Performing Arts Center, the community center referendum that was passed a few years back. And this is general obligation debt. It is kind of sequestered on this sheet, so you can at least see that this is a significant dollar amount that does ultimately have an impact on the overall levy, but it is finite to some degree, as it will have a termination period when that bond has been retired. All told, our year-over-year increase in levy is roughly $750,000 from last year. That equates to about a 5.6% increase. Again, as you look at how that plays out historically, one thing to note is we need to bear in mind what the equalized value of the village is. The equalized value that's displayed here on your screen is the full equalized value of the village. That includes all of our tax incremental finance districts. The village is a very strong and growing community. We had roughly 15.3% overall increase in our equalized value year over year. That is a phenomenal amount of increase. Now, just to be clear, the equalized value is the value established by the State Department of Revenue. The assessed value is something that the assessor places on individual real property in hopes to identify those property values to equal the equalized value. So ultimately, we're trying to have our assessed value equal the equalized value, but it's the state that determines what that equalized value is. So again, almost a $500 million increase in equalized value year over year. To give you a frame of reference, there are many communities in the state of Wisconsin that don't even equal $500 million in value. So that's a pretty substantial number, all told. As I mentioned before, about $750,000 increase in overall levy. That, again, that total levy, I don't know if that number's right, Greg, but 15%, I think we have, that is different, but we'll verify that. And then the village tax rate, as you can see, is going down substantially. So that 15.03% on the village tax levy, that number stands to be corrected. However, on the tax rate, the tax rate per $1,000 of assessed value, it is decreasing $1 and roughly 13 cents per thousand, or about 19.6%. That is directly attributed to two factors. One, a substantial increase in total equalized value, so the value of properties are increasing, but you'll also note that our assessed value also changes as a result of that change in equalized value. And because the aggregate base of the tax rate has increased above the overall numerator of the tax rate, the overall tax rate itself then decreases. This table, as included in your budget booklet, indicates what the village's, the village-only tax rate is, based on that $1,000 of assessed value. To my knowledge, this is the lowest tax rate the village has had in at least 15 years, so this is a pretty substantial reduction in tax rate. This particular bar graph identifies what the municipal operations value of that tax rate is. So that's going to be your general fund operating levy, your capital projects levy, and your debt service levy. The 0.5 cents represents the referendum bonding, that 1.5 million. So you can see when that referendum expires or retires, the levy, the operating levy, would actually be $4.12. That's phenomenal to have that type of tax rate for a full-service municipality. From an impact standpoint, I think this is probably the table that is best representative of what that impact is to the average taxpayer. We have two particular rows for historical purposes. Last year's tax rate, so budget year '23, versus proposed budget '24. If I have a home valued at $200,000 in '23, based on that tax rate, I would be paying $225.84 more than I would in the proposed 2024 year. Now, with that, the caveat should be said is that values obviously increased, and as represented in the bottom row, the median home value in Ashwabanon in 2023 was $187,300. The median home, as assessed for budget year 2024, increased to $247,300, so a fairly sizable increase. Despite the overall rate change, so a 19.6% reduction in our tax rate, if I had that median home in '23 and that median home in '24, I will see a tax increase on my village taxes of $66.45 with the budget that is proposed. Now, what I like to do is, I like to point out, what does that equate to on a monthly basis? So many times, individuals that have a mortgage, the mortgage requires an escrow, or if you don't have an escrow account established with your mortgage, maybe you do that on your own. I like to set aside dollars every month towards my property tax payment, so when that tax bill comes, I have money set aside, ready to make that payment. So if I have a $250,000 home in the village of Ashwabanon, my monthly impact of village taxes under this budget is $96.51. Compare that to what you typically pay for a cell phone bill or a cable bill. They're well over $100. So if you think about that from an impact standpoint, that is paying for your garbage to get picked up every week, your streets to be plowed, you'd have the ability to call 911 if, in the event you're having a heart attack, and have a first responder or paramedic arrive at your doorstep very quickly, have law enforcement available to you 24/7. Your street, you have leaf pickup, yardway site, you have park and rec programs, a community center, all of these features for less than what you pay to have a computer on a tablet device in your pocket. In my opinion, I think it's a pretty good deal. I think we're doing well that way. Now, one thing that people often say when they see that table is, well, I pay way more than $1,200 in property taxes a year. How are you saying my tax bill is only $1,200? Well, that's because every dollar paid in taxes here, when people pay their property taxes to the village, we only keep 0.31 of that. The remainder of that value goes back to the other taxing jurisdictions through a reconciliation process. This particular table shows that, and although in the past, there was a larger discretion between Ashwabanon School District residents and West DePere residents, they are virtually the same. So as shown here, your property tax bill in the village is roughly 30% to 31%, depending on what school district you're in. About 0.45 to 0.46 is paid to your local school district. The county takes about 0.20 of that dollar, and the VOTAC College, NWTC, takes about 0.4. Now, as I mentioned, the village tax rate is decreasing pretty substantially because of that increase in value, but that value is not only impactful to the village, but it's also impactful to all of the other taxing jurisdictions in the village. And so this table represents a pretty substantial decrease to what is called the combined tax rate of all those jurisdictions. And again, at 1415 for Ashwabanon to 1436 per thousand for DePere, that is the lowest combined tax rate that we've had in well over 10 years. Now, I will note a caveat, and it's listed here as an asterisk item. We have not received our final school tax levy credit from the state. Those come out, like, maybe tomorrow at the earliest, probably next week, Monday at the latest. So that number could change, but it's going to be relatively immaterial to the overall value, okay? So you're not going to see a $2 increase to the tax rate. The number that's associated here is based on last year's school levy tax credit. So again, as I mentioned, that combined tax bill to the average taxpayer in Ashwabanon is looking at about a $3,500 total tax bill. So that $247,000 home, their tax bill would be roughly $3,500. And if you were to write out in detail on your check register where all that money went, this is kind of how that would break down. Again, looking towards kind of the bottom quarter of this sheet, the vast majority of that is going to the school district. This represents the Ashwabanon district, but if it were West DePere, it'd be relatively similar. So about $1,400 goes to the school district, about $750 to Brown County, and $145 to the VOTAC. But beyond that, if you look at snow removal, you have your street in front of your home plowed for less than $13 a year. I would challenge any of you to call a snow removal company to have the snow removed from your driveway for the course of the winter, and see if it'll come in less than $12.79. The other thing I'll mention is sanitation, so garbage, recycling, that's your wood chipping, your yard waste collection, leaf pickup, $53.51 for the year. I would challenge you to call a private garbage collection company and see what that cost is going to be for you. I guarantee you, it will be more than $53 every month. So the economy of scale is very powerful when you look at it from a community-wide perspective, and you can see that we're operating, again, in my opinion, very efficiently to provide services to our residents. Now, breaking down the overall budget, just looking at some charts here. This is the revenue side of the general fund. Property taxes, again, make up the substantial majority of revenues under the general fund at 58%. The other second-largest revenue source is intergovernmental. So that particular line item has increased substantially, and I want to thank Mary and her involvement with the League of Municipalities, our local representatives. As you are all aware, we did receive a very substantial increase in county municipal aid from the state, and that has been very, very helpful for us to accomplish the goals that are outlined in the budget as well. So we would be amiss if we didn't thank the legislature in actually making that substantial change. On the expenditure side, you probably guessed it, the largest expenditure is in public safety, and that is pretty typical of any municipality, specifically those that are of our size or greater. Now, that makes up all of police, fire, and rescue. So oftentimes, in other municipalities, you might see those three agencies broken out individually, but because we are a combined agency, you can see that that does take up the largest component of the budget. Beyond that, Public Works takes up the second-largest, and that just makes sense based on headcount. Now, one thing I'll mention here is that this kind of breaks down the types of expenditures that we have with the village, and our largest cost center are our people. It's our greatest asset. It's our greatest opportunity to deliver services, but that's where the substantial majority of our expense comes from, and that is our employees. So our wages and benefits take up the majority, about 74% of the overall spend-- About 74% of the overall spending within the general fund is in wages and benefits. So ultimately, if you're going to make substantive changes to the budget, you're really looking at making changes to people. So on that note, I want to touch on some personnel changes that are part of the budget that I'm sure will generate some conversation. We have three components that make up these personnel changes that I think are important to note. The first are new positions. When the department heads submitted their budgets to administration, there were roughly nine and a half positions that were included in the budget that are new for 2024. The budget in, in general includes seven brand-new positions and a couple of reclassified or re, retooled positions within the budget. So the new positions that are included are a human resources generalist. The deputy clerk one administrative assistant position is a retooled position. So with the change in personal property tax and the pending retirement of our assessment technician, we are looking at adjusting that position and converting it into a deputy clerk admin assistant role to support the clerk's office with elections, licensing, and permits. We have an engineering technician position that is in Public Works. The code enforcement assistant zoning administrator is a retooled position. We currently have a half-time code enforcement officer. This has been on the board's radar for quite some time. And if Gary's online, I'm sure he's tickled pink right now because it's, it's there, Gary. We have a full-time code enforcement assistant zoning administrator position. The parks department has an additional parks labor position included in the budget. We have an IT network specialist position to support Jeremy and the, the IT department. And then in public safety, we have two new positions. A public safety commander position. It'll be public safety commander for support services. And they had requested an additional investigator within their investigation division as well. So all told, seven new positions, two retooled positions that are, are really substantially changing the role going into 2024. In addition to that, these do make up changes, substantial changes to the overall cost and expense within the budget. And that are classification changes within, within the village. And so finance and personnel and village board actually took up these issues earlier in the year, knowing that the budget was going to be proposed. So all told, there are nine positions in the, in the village that are being reclassified. Those reclassifications are in large part due to two factors. One, based on job responsibilities and duties, they move up in the wage matrix, if you will, or they're reclassified in grade. Or because of the compensation review that was completed in 2023, it was recommended to adjust them to maintain competitiveness. And so those are the, the nine positions that are based, again, I apologize. They're based on more of that compensation review, four positions that are based on the reclassification of job duties. In addition to that, tied to that conversation of classification changes, again, finance and personnel and village board earlier in the year in July through September-ish, were talking about making adjustments to the wage and salary matrix. So that included a roughly 4% to 6% increase in overall base wages based on that compensation review of comparables. And then, and that also includes an increase due to inflationary costs from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So the wage adjustment was roughly between 1% and 2.5%. And the, the CPI increase was 3.2% on the overall matrix. So that equates to that 4.6%. All told, this is the overall org chart. And so not a whole lot of changes than what had been presented earlier in the year as related to the wage and salary matrix and those reclassification of positions. I can send you, this is really hard to see, I understand that. I can certainly send this to you in a more detailed format so you can zoom in and zoom out. I'll touch on a few notable budget modifications. And I'm sure that as you've gone through the budget document, you've highlighted areas that are of note to yourself. And I certainly am not able to include all of those on a single screen. But I do want to just kind of note some things in case people had questions. Under general government, the first one to note is that there is a communications division that was added. That was under IT. We, we thought it was appropriate to kind of move it out and single it out within the budget so that it didn't get clouded under IT. It's not a new program or new service. It's just separated so that we can set and establish individual goals, objectives, and accomplishments. I already noted the assessment technician position and the transition and retooling of that position. The IT network specialist. And then also of note, we're looking to retool kind of how we handle and manage HR. HR was largely directly reported to the village manager. We're looking to reclassify and create kind of a deputy village manager with our attorney spot, so legal services will oversee the HR component. So village attorney, deputy village manager, that's a combined role. Have an HR generalist in there. And so you'll see the shifting of contracted services under general administration move into an expense related to that HR generalist under legal services. Under public ser, public safety, you'll note that there's increases in wages specifically related to the added commander position as well as the added investigator position. We did deny a request for a full-time community risk reduction officer. That particular position was geared towards filling in a gap on fire inspection duties. So rather than having a, a layperson fire inspector, they would have a sworn officer conduct that. We recently instituted a contracted service for fire inspection. And so our thought was we would continue through that service for at least this next year. So we did deny that request for that position. But as a result of that, we needed to increase or add back the part-time wages that were eliminated as a result. There were a number of capital outlay requests for, from the Oneida Services Fund. On page 16 in your, in your book, it lists all the different modifications that were made in detail. And so you can see a list of different purchases that were reduced in order to, to, to fit budget. They do have a number of vehicles incorporated in the budget. Two patrol vehicles, which is based on their routine schedule of replacement, as well as a supervisor squad vehicle. Again, those are all vehicles that are specific to their replacement schedule, and they're not new vehicles to the fleet. On the public work side, again, we talked about the engineering tech being added. You can see there are a number of cost increases. Many of those on the supply side is directly related to inflationary pressures. I point out one on this slide as it relates to snow and ice control, particularly salt supplies. You'll see increased costs for oil, gas, fuel, and utilities as well. We have a increased emphasis on traffic control. And so there's a larger budget, about $12,000 increase in traffic control for various improvements to traffic signals to make sure that they are operating and functioning correctly. On pages 177 and 179, you can see a, a fairly significant increase in capital equipment purchases. This is to replace existing fleet that have aged out. Many of these items have already been given preauthorization for, but now they show up in the budget. So I guess just, just for your reference. And then a couple of other things that I'll mention under the ARPA fund is we are looking to purchase another set of Meridian barriers. Those are the barriers that we use to close street traffic during special events and Packer games. And we're looking to do that now while we have ARPA funding available in preparation of the draft in 2025. In addition to that, we have an aging fleet of Christmas decorations or holiday decorations for the village. And we felt that that would be a good opportunity to use some ARPA funds to replace that. So we have some snowflakes that are not functioning correctly. On the park and rec side, we added some full, we added that full-time labor position. There are a number of capital outlay requests. And some of those projects were either moved to ARPA or moved to some other funding category. Again, many of those adjustments are found on page 15 and 16 of the front of the booklet. And then we also, you'll see substantial increases in wages. That is in relation to the seasonal wage adjustments that were completed last year. If you recall, we adjusted wages for lifeguards, concessionaires, so on and so forth, post-budget. So this budget reflects those changes more directly. And then again, on the community development side, we're adding the full-time assistant zoning administrator, code enforcement officer. And those are found under both building inspection and economic development. So to wrap up and to conclude, each year we kind of talk about kind of those guiding principles that really what you should be focused on as a board. I think I have eight or nine guiding principles to kind of walk through. Ultimately, what we want to do is really kind of look at things at a high level, right? If you want to spend a lot of time counting how many paperclips are being purchased or pens or pencils, we're welcome to do that. We can certainly do that. But bear in mind that I don't know that that's necessarily going to produce the impact that you desire, right? Think about it from an impact of savings or, or, or services, right? So those questions are, is the tax levy increasing or decreasing? Is the tax rate increasing or decreasing? Can we add services? Can we eliminate services? You know, maybe you have a question specific to a department, like why is this increasing 20%? That wasn't answered either in this presentation or in the narrative. We can answer those. And ultimately, does this budget carry out our mission? And we feel that, we, we've aligned that. But you are obviously the ultimate arbiter of that, that point of view. At the end of the day, we, we looked that any program or service, it would be better to just eliminate that service versus provide it either poorly or marginally, right? Don't cut something in half and offer a poor, a poor service. At the end of the day, I think that creates more ill will with your constituency than just not providing the service at all. When we put together the budget, we also recognize that services that provide a direct private benefit should be supported at least in part, but hopefully in whole, by fees and charges. So as an example, swimming lessons, right? Generally speaking, swimming lessons are not necessarily provided wholly by the tax, property taxes, but in part by user fees. So we, we try to find that balance between public versus private benefit. When we do the budget, when administration kind of sits down and goes through the budget, we do not look at across-the-board cuts. We don't feel that that's really conducive to our effort. So saying, "Well, we're going to cut the budget 10%." Everybody cut your budget 10%. Rather, we'd rather look at it bit by bit, service by service, program by program, and prioritize what, what is really necessary and needed for the community. Again, the provision of services should reflect the priorities of your constituents. In addition to that, there are a number of plans that have already been adopted. So the budget should align with that. Whether that's the strategic plan, your comp plan, your corp plan, so on and so forth. We also recognize, and we tell this to department heads right away, that setting the priorities and reductions on their requests isn't necessarily kind of shared equally. That some departments may see larger reductions or changes or modifications than others. And again, that's based on prioritization. We talk about this quite a bit, especially on the revenue side, that if you're going to make changes to the budget, they should be sustainable. Don't artificially inflate something on paper one year to make your budget balance only for it to hurt you the next year. When we plan for capital resource allocation, we look to maintain our existing infrastructure first before we add new infrastructure. And then again, the, the reduction in, in, in the budget should not curtail the delivery of those core services to meet those legal requirements. That's kind of that catch-all. You cannot cut Chris's budget for elections. You could maybe reduce it, modify it, find efficiencies, but we still have to conduct an election, and we still need to have some resources available to do that. All right, so as I mentioned, I would repeat myself on this topic. The budget is balanced. I gave you a high-level overview. Again, if you want to adopt it as it is, you're welcome to do that. But Greg is certainly prepared to kind of walk through each budget, department by department, fund by fund. And the department directors are here, key staff members are here, and they are certainly willing and ready to answer whatever specific questions you may have on the budget. And I'll pass it back over to the board.
Okay, so we, as Joel said, we can either just say, "Yep, I like the budget the way it is, and we'll accept it and move on, and then we'll be done," or you...
Tracy would never.
Hey, come on. I thought, I told Greg before the meeting that they did a great job on it. I have very few questions or issues. I could probably do that, Mary.
Okay, well, here we go. So I'm going to turn it over to Greg and let him talk through some of the items. Like I said, you know, when this all started, we were over $1 million in the hole. And thanks to the department heads, we, we were able to find common ground here. And I appreciate that from everybody. So here we go.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Joel. And again, I reiterate what was said about staff. It's always, this is a tough challenge. It's a fun challenge for me, I enjoy it. But when you have staff and colleagues to work with that I have, it, it makes it a lot easier. Very cooperative, very understanding, and they work well as a team. Passionate for what they do in their areas, but yet understanding of, of the needs of the village as a whole. So it's a great staff. You should be proud of, of who you have working for you in the village, so. So yeah, so we can, we can do this a variety of different ways. Typically, the way the budget is set up, it starts with the general fund and just goes in number order, if you will. So general fund is the largest portion of the budget, and it's special revenues, debt service, capital projects, enterprise, and then ends with the internal service funds. So I don't plan to go line by line. We've done it a variety of ways. We can just do general fund questions by department. We can just open it up to, hey, let's go to page whatever. I have a question on this, on that. But I think Joel covered so many of the features. You know, when we've got 74% roughly of being personnel costs in the general fund, and then you start looking at things like most of our training, for example, is mandated or required. So a lot of our services are in lieu of having staff to do that. And then you have things like gas and electric that we don't have any control over the cost. So you start breaking down a variety of these line items. There's, you know, either we have it or we don't, kind of, kind of process. I wanted to touch base on a couple of revenue things that you may have noted outside of the tax levy. The, Joel alluded to the shared taxes. We had an increase of about $445,000. That was the number. So that's reflected in the budget. Most revenue lines have held steady. I'll address one other line item, which is interest income. So if you'll notice, if you read through and you see, "Hey, we're forecasting $1 million." Why are you not budgeting $1 million again? This is one of those sustainable increases in the budget. It's a bit of a crystal ball with when is that going to come back down? So we're very careful and cautious of how much we increase that. I would fully expect to get what we have budgeted, potentially more. It's an election year. It doesn't make a lot of sense for someone to go after interest rates at this point. But we don't really know what's going to happen in 2025, 2026. And if all of a sudden you look back to 2021 where we're at, that would be a big budget issue if we have to drop it back down substantially. So I wanted to point that out. And then the only other, it was one other item, would just be in the transportation aid is up slightly. So that was another win from the state. Not as much as many wanted to do, but we have that. And then the other piece, in case it comes up, still waiting on the, we did actually get a, a notice on personal property and how that's going to impact it now that we're taking personal property taxes away. There will be something coming out in the spring, work papers, worksheets to help identify the aid the state is going to provide. Sounds like they're going to try to make us whole on that. So that'll be an increase for the 2025 budget. But there'll be more to follow next year. One thing we do not do, that a lot of communities are doing, when I'm seeing the trend, is instituting other fees. Transportation fees, car, you know, tire taxes, those types of things, garbage fees. We don't do any of that. We've never needed to do that. And so when we look at our budget, that's not something that even comes up as a discussion point. So...
Greg, I have to say that I just heard of a local, not a local municipality, but there was a municipality that has put in a streetlight fee. So, yeah, they're finding all kinds of fees, so.
So, and, and part of that is, you know, we don't borrow for vehicles. We don't, we don't borrow for that. We don't have those interest costs. So that's kind of the revenue as a whole. So when you look at that, most, most other items are fairly stable. Licenses, permits, charges for services for, you know, rescue squad services or, you know, programming at the park and recreation areas like that. So a lot of those are left up to the department heads. If there's individual fee changes they would like to make to stay in trend, we typically try to be in the middle when we have fees. We don't like to be a frontrunner with the cost of things. Try to be in the middle. So that did come before the board, I think, last month for any adjustments.
Greg, I have a question on the state aids and then mainly public safety. There's very few or almost none listed. The only one that looks like we have state aids is for police training. Are those yet to be determined, or are we not getting those, like the alcohol grant, the speed, the seatbelt?
So we just budget to one line, not really knowing, and I think the chief can answer better, but typically the state will offer, hey, we're going to have seatbelt grant opportunities, and then they jump on that if it's available. And then we categorize them when they actually come into the right line. We don't have that readily available at this time.
Okay. When does the referendum portion of the tax levy end?
There were three debt issues starting in 2013, and most of those were 20-year issues. So it's going to be another 10 years before we start seeing substantial drop-offs. It scales down a little bit, but that first issue was a 20-year issue. So 20, I think 2032 would be the last year. So, you know, what do you want to do? Do you want to go through this? This was just a high view of revenue. You have no questions?
A suggestion I would have, Greg, is why don't we just go department by department? And then let anybody who has a question in a particular area stop you. Otherwise, there are some departments I think will just skip right through.
Sure.
That nobody's going to have any questions. In some cases, it might just be comments and things like that. I know I have a few in a couple of areas, so.
Can I ask one quick question? We talked about adding seven new positions, and you did not mention the PAC person. Is that obviously a split position between the school district? Has that been approved through the school district already?
So that position is funded by the village, but it's not necessarily employed by the village. So there are funds allocated towards that in the budget. To my knowledge, I don't know that they've filled that position yet. So there are, I believe, $30,000 additional funds. Basically, it would be a transfer. We would transfer funds to the school district to pay the wages that they've employed. They'd invoice the village, and we'd pay them back.
Okay, so obviously, the school district is also budgeted for that new position.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on revenues, general fund revenues? If not, then we can head into the expenditure section by department. So the first section is general government, which is kind of, you know, the village board, clerk, those types of offices. Starting on page 17 is village board and administration budget.
The only comment that I had there, and I mentioned it to Joel, is I'm very pleased to see that we're going to be starting to work on a marketing strategy, and I realize this is going to be stepped. I know we don't have any real dollars assigned to that yet, so that's something that in the future I would be expecting is some sort of a marketing budget. We don't have it here, but I would think we're going to need it. 2025 would be a nice place to have a whole bunch of marketing dollars to market Ashwabanon while we got all those people here. So, just a comment.
And the $50,000 reduction in contracted services is a direct relation to the HR generalist position being added. Any questions on municipal court? Starting on page 20. Communications, as Joel noted, that's just a shifting out of the IT budget into its own line item.
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to say, you know, in the few years that I've been on this committee, I really feel this is one of the best bang-for-our-bucks we've ever invested in. The image that the village's communications have in the cohesion across platforms, it makes us look like a community much larger than we are, and it really gives us such a professional and polished look. So happy to see that this is a continued investment area for the village. Makes me really proud to live here.
Village clerk? The one thing to note here is there will be four elections next year. So this is one of those that ebbs and flows with the number of elections. Assessor's office. And this is one of the budgets that's impacted by some of the position realignments, if you will. Finance department.
Oh, we got all kinds of questions there, Greg.
Yeah. IT includes the network specialist position. Legal services.
Oh, can I go back real quick to IT, if you don't mind? We had the computer consulting costs in there of $22,000, and I was just wondering with the addition of a new employee, if that could be reduced? I know it looks like it was reduced a bit. With a new employee, if we would need as many, as much consulting?
So that's our contract with Hybert Technologies with Craig. He does some very specialized work with us, specifically on the inspection software, and has been helping with the website. So I don't think that would be, and Jeremy can talk to this, I don't think that would be an area where he would transfer that knowledge necessarily of that software.
To that new person?
And he does, he is very invaluable when Jeremy has certain unique challenges of server upgrades and things like that. He comes in and helps out, so. But Jeremy can certainly add if you have anything to add.
Yeah, I would just reiterate what Greg said, too. And I think it's just an hourly rate that we pay for Craig, too. So it doesn't always, we budget $22,000, but doesn't mean that we always hit that every year, so. Last year, we retooled our MCRM projects. That was a big chunk of dollar amount that was, that went to his services for that. We don't anticipate as many updates with MCRM this next year, but we'll see how that goes, so.
Thank you.
Then village hall maintenance, on page 42. This is a fund we use for early repairs and items within this building and potentially garage as well. Not necessarily upgrades or things like that. That'd be the village building fund. This cost allocation of people, so you'll see it specifically when we get into the public works and sanitation budgets. They have a pool of employees. We do a rough allocation based on historical trends and any known projects and allocate to a variety of different departments. So if they come in, you know, have to do some work around here, then they allocate their time to this budget. And then the general government budget is kind of these catchalls for all the random, you know, printer costs, postage, paper costs. We don't break that out to each individual department. You know, how much paper does building inspection use versus finance versus public works? We just allocate those costs here. It also includes our insurance, unemployment, and property bills, telephones, those types of...
Greg, remind me, who do we use for our bank?
Associated. And so we will be doing an RFP that was discussed, and it will be, the contract is up May of 2025. So next summer, we'll start dabbling in what that's going to take to do that.
Greg, I noticed workman's comp went up quite a bit.
Yeah, worker comp is, it's just based on trend and factors, you know, as claims. And so they'll audit our financials, and then I believe, I don't know, is it directly just us, or is it kind of a blend of the state action?
Yeah, it's based primarily on two big factors. One, the modification factor, which is based on your three-year average. So if you have a set of high claims over that three-year period, let's say you have one really bad year, that'll impact your mod factor, and that increases it. Now, we are in a three-year period where we have one year where we had a few substantial injuries that resulted in some high payouts. So that's number one, and then two, it's based on headcount, too. So with an increasing headcount, we see an increasing cost for that insurance as well. One thing I'll mention that wasn't discussed in the presentation, as I mentioned earlier, there was nine and a half position requests. We talked about filling seven. One of those that was cut was the community risk reduction officer. The other position that was requested was a facility maintenance technician position that would have fit both under village hall maintenance and garage and public works. So that position was eliminated as a request as well. Not, again, both positions that were eliminated, we didn't feel that there wasn't a need. It was just a matter of making the numbers work. And based on what we could prioritize for need for this fiscal year was what made the cut and what did not. So that position was requested, but it was not included in the budget.
So we'll move into public safety. One thing I meant to note, there's a lot of their capital needs. Some of it is just ongoing annual replacements. We use the United Service Agreement funds to capture that, but also the IT costs as well, like replacement of servers and things like that, the annuals. So you may not see them here, but they'll show up again in the special revenue fund. So this is more or less designed to be the operations, the day-to-day operational needs of the public safety.
Brian, can you go through a little bit about the commander of support services, what that position would entail?
Yeah, so really what we're doing is we're dividing out our functions in our unit. We're going to have an operations commander that's going to be responsible for the day-to-day operations, the shifts, that type of thing. And the support services commander is going to take over a lot of the functions that we are kind of falling behind on as far as supervision goes. They're going to supervise the CSOs, take them out of the investigative role. They're going to supervise the captain of investigations, an investigations unit, traffic officer, when we get a traffic officer in place, the POCs paid on call, fire inspections, and the POCs. So we're really kind of dividing out the scope of command there. The other big function that they're going to fill in, as well, is the chief 390 position. Right now, that's only being serviced by two people, and that is a huge demand on their time when they're off-duty and responding to calls, fire calls, and stuff like that. So we're going to have another person in that role as well. So they're going to have a multifaceted role in helping us in our day-to-day activities. And one of the big reasons why we wanted the commander position was to try to get the most bang for our buck. And what I mean by that is, I remember Jay last year talking about, well, you should have asked for six officers, when they asked for three, right? So one of the big reasons why we're doing this is we're going to try and take a lot of the administrative role off of the supervisors to allow them to get back out on the street and do more of that work. So we're really adding more officers in that role as well by adding this position.
Thank you.
Looking ahead to 2025, with our wonderful NFL draft in town, does the NFL help us out with cost in that?
I wish. So we agreed to support them in the draft, in the NFL draft. So when that comes to town, that's going to be a big operation. What the NFL does do is, once they get the layout done, they fence off the area, they provide security. So they'll bring in their own security staff that will help with that. We, not just us, but, you know, the agencies in Brown County, will supplement that staff. So if we have, let's say they have two or three security guards at one entry point, we'll have an officer there supplementing in case something goes wrong that they can't handle. We'll have an officer there as well. So we'll be in charge of supporting that. We'll be in charge of the traffic. And right now, we're kind of reaching out to the state patrol to assist us with the traffic for that time span as well, so that'll greatly assist. But we're on the hook for those types of, those activities.
And I think it's still to be determined. Obviously, there's going to be resources that come from outside of Ashwabanon or the greater Green Bay area, state patrol, other deputies. Think of like a partisan national committee congress of some sort, Republican National Committee or Democratic National Committee in Milwaukee. They have officers come in from throughout the state. There is a local fundraising group that the Packers and other agencies are involved with. That's where that money from the state is going towards. So there's our hope that there is going to be some form of reimbursement from the local fundraising committee for all of these extraordinary costs. So the state, the Packers, other agencies throughout the region recognize that there's an opportunity for reimbursement. Where I think administratively, we're most concerned is the volume of work that it's going to create and the burnout that that might produce over that, what could be up to a 28-day-type build-out.
Any other questions, public safety? As we have fire inspections in the next budget. And again, now we have, in this one, and you'll see the increase in contracted services, which Joel said, we already started this year in lieu of the fire inspector itself, position itself. So this budget includes salaries and wages for part-time inspectors, and then this contracted line. It's followed up by building inspection. No questions on the public works and sanitation? So you'll see, we altered this a little bit, for those who remember, to make it a little bit easier, hopefully, to put it all kind of in narratives altogether because of the way that the personnel work out there. There's a group of guys, and then based on needs and projects and things, they will go out and do, you know, there's certain, you know, functions, street maintenance, or curb and gutter, snow and ice, or all those things. So then they allocate their time based on the project they worked on. So they're all in here. If you have specific questions, we'll just look at this as a whole. So I know there's a lot here, but certainly page through, any questions? Again, a lot of the supply line items are inflationary increases that, you know, we don't have a lot of control over.
Greg, though, item on page 63, it says transit system contracted services, increased $8,000 to increased operational costs. What actually is that?
So transit is...
Is that the bus system?
That's the bus service.
Okay.
Yep, with the city of Green Bay.
Okay. So the increase is just, is for our bus services, what they charge for the bus services for Ashwabanon? Okay.
Yeah, we get notification from the director, Patty, down there as we're preparing the budget. This is what we estimate your costs to be for fiscal year '24, and basically, they just get converted into our budget.
And then what they will do is they'll do an audit. We've talked about this once before here. And then we'll get a check usually in June after the books are all closed, and that goes now into a revenue line, so we have a better line indicator of how much our costs really are.
Okay.
Brian, I see you're not requesting any new staff or anything. How are you doing from a services standpoint when it comes to vacations? And obviously, the age of your workforce is getting this, so vacations, how are you, are you able to manage this? Is it reaching a point where you might have to start to add people? Just give me an overview of that.
Yeah, so where we currently sit, I would say we're nearly at that threshold. You definitely hit it on its head for vacations and stuff like that. It's very challenging to allow all the staff to get the vacations that they'd like, to ensure that we have coverage, because we do have a large staff group that is very tenured here, and they have, you know, considerable weeks of vacation that they've earned. But as we continue to grow, you know, out towards Sand Acres and Fox Islands and stuff like that, that's more services that are being requested of us. That, I would say, in the next few years, we'll definitely have to look at adding a staff person. One of the people that we were, we did put in the budget, but it did not get funded, was a facilities person. Because right now, that's kind of being handled by Public Works as time allows. And it puts a lot of weight on not only my shoulders, but one of our four persons' shoulders, where it's, you know, it's getting to be pretty challenging, especially as our building here, you know, ages. I mean, between fixtures, you know, faucets and stuff that need to be replaced, the balles and the lights. It's just stuff that is growing with age that, you know, we're definitely struggling there, but it's something that you'll probably see put forth in the budget in 2025, asking for that position potentially again. With that, another position that we do have in the budget here is for an engineer technician. That would be kind of an offset. We already do contract that service out with multiple different consultant engineering firms. When I started looking at, you know, what we expend in comparison to the types of work that we're doing, seeing if it... work that we're doing, seeing if it'd make more sense to us fiscally to do that in-house, and it definitely does. So you'll see that in the budget as an additional person. That would do more of the elementary-type engineering stuff that sometimes Steve and I are doing, or sometimes we're contracting out.
Any impact with the pending, you know, we've got expansion going on, especially out in our Wester Pierce School District area, out there in Highland and things like that, equipment, things like that for the future and additional people? Or do you think you can cover it with the people, but maybe need more equipment or anything?
Right, so we kind of are, as part of the budget actually for next year, we're kind of, I looked at trying to create some efficiencies with some of the equipment that we have. So for instance, we have a grader that we use, but it's only used in the winter. It used to be that piece of equipment was actually used for building roads, and we used to build roads here in Ashwabanon. But looking at what we can do with equipment like that when it gets replaced, so replacing with a loader, something that can be used year-round. So whether, you know, maybe it's used for rubbish pickup or out at the yardway site, stuff like that. And then it also has a faster travel speed than a grader, which allows for faster snow removal. It's a lot more agile also. So looking at different ways, kind of think outside the box to create efficiencies with what we have. I would say when it comes to winter equipment, we're doing well. You know, there's no challenge, like there's a crazy shortfall. I think the biggest challenge is, you know, just staff, like I had said, it's not, not that we are, we're to that point right now, but I'm glad to hear that, you know, we are going to get to that point, I would say, in the next few years.
Okay, right. Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
I see on page 58, there's a paragraph about snow and ice control, and it says that you're going to clear a variety of village sidewalks and trails. Is there a place in here that lists like which trails are covered? I know we talked about it.
Um, no, there's nowhere formal in the budget where it lays that out. We're going to clear the existing trails that we do, so along the waterfront, along the river. We also cleared the main ab trail, Sand Acres Trail, and Rex, am I missing one? I know I'm missing one, but--
I think that was it.
Wabi.
Wabi, there we go. And wabi. So those are the existing trails that we do remove snow on. There is other trails throughout the village at this time. We haven't really had a great, you know, year to compare, you know. Snow from last year was our very first year that we did it, so we had a pretty light snowfall. So we're just making sure that what we do and what we commit to, we're able to sustainably deliver that service rather than stretching our legs too far. So we're looking to remove the snow on the same trails. There's been talks of adding the addition of the Alden Station Trail since we are already plowing snow along that riverfront.
Any other questions for public works and sanitation? If not, we'll move into parks, recreation, forestry area. It starts with the administrative budget. And then we have the community pool and the lake, and Melody's here, if you want to ask her any questions. Again, not a lot of necessary changes, other than, as Joel pointed out, we've made the changes to the pay matrix, part-time pay matrix that's now instituted into this budget. And we have adult recreation, co-sponsored and youth recreation.
I am, I'm going to challenge the, on the co-sponsored, and I'm going to be challenging an area which is going to seem really weird for me to be challenging because of my past. I don't feel we should be putting taxpayer money into replace Diamond Four. I feel that should be a fundraiser thing that each co-sponsored organization should take up. I feel you spend tons of great money on maintaining, you're doing roofs, you're doing the maintaining of the diamonds, you do fencing, you do all this stuff. I think that's all great, but when it comes to an actual capital improvement for something for a specific co-sponsored organization, I really feel that needs to be fundraised. I know in my experience with baseball and that, that's what we've done. I would never come back and ask taxpayers money to be. And I feel it should be the same thing here. They can raise this money. This is not something that tax, I know they can raise $8,900 because I've done it.
So, and very well could be Jay, I guess there's a couple moving parts to that. So AGSA and AYB are the two largest ones. They're, the money is separated a little bit differently. They are both given the same amount of money. AYB chooses to use half of the money that is allotted to them from the village for supplies and equipment, and the other half for umpire wages. Anything above the umpire wages is charged back to them and counted as revenue against those expenses. AGSA chooses to use the full amount for equipment, and then they do their own accounting and whatnot for their umpires. That being said, this is interesting because this may be coming up to the park board in the next couple of months. It is way, way back when, part of the reason why we decided to start, you know, or give the organizations money is we still wanted to have some type of control on how each co-sponsored organization ran.
Totally understood, and should be.
Yep. And whether, and the better way, best way to do that obviously is to help support them financially a little bit, and that's one of the bigger reasons is boards change. During my tenure, for the most part, we've had great boards across, you know, for the full 18 years that I've been here, that have, for the most part, really thought about the kids. There's been a few outliers where they've tried to make some decisions where we kind of said, hold on, let's kind of take a look at this. But that's part of the reason why we sponsor them or help them financially, so that we are able to have a say, I guess, and to make sure what decisions they're making is for the best interest of the kids in the village as a whole. That being said, we also, unlike many, many outlying communities, not necessarily in the urban metro Green Bay area, but we do not allow alcohol sales. And that is a big, a big sale--
Yep.
--fundraising effort for a lot, I mean, a lot of communities.
Yep.
Where, that's one of the reasons why a lot of communities can do stuff on their own is because of those alcohol sales. And we've always felt in Ashwabanon that, I get it, hot summer night, some people like to have a beer during, you know, weather, or on a weekend watching a tournament and so forth, but we've always felt historically, and this can certainly change, but that it is best to keep alcohol and kids separated.
100% in agreement.
And so that's another reason why, because the co-sponsored organizations haven't had that opportunity to raise money with alcohol sales, that we help support them additionally, nominally really, for their overall budgets and what they're looking to try and do and purchase.
Yeah. And, you know, I get all that, but I still strongly feel that they can fundraise $8,900. Here's my biggest fear. They take $8,900 for this, now AYB says, well, I want to do my three diamonds. Now that's another 9,000 times three, that's $27,000. And I feel that each organization needs to take on a capital improvement plan and do this through fundraising to support that, because I don't feel it's fair for the taxpayers to pay for the retooling of a diamond that's going to be used specifically for that organization. The rest of the community, I would say, does not get a huge advantage. They don't get any advantage from it. I mean, I, and like I said, when I started out, very weird for me to be saying this, but I feel, and my experience is, is that there are sponsors out there who will help to come up with $8,900 to redo that diamond. And I will also state that I walked that diamond tonight. I'm a little surprised there is even a capital improvement to be done on Diamond Four. Didn't look like it needed to me.
It's just the dirt. Unfortunately, the dirt is fairly expensive. The cost is to remove four to five inches of the top mix and then put new material down. There was some bad dirt bought a number of years back that wasn't really up to standard, per se.
Yeah, but--
And with the years of dragging and I can't, you know how much diamond dry and how much chalk eventually gets mixed up with that, with the infield mix. Eventually becomes very soft and powdery and kind of needs to be reconditioned, per se. And that's basically what this is.
Yeah, and I totally understand that, but I still feel that the co-sponsored organizations should be taking on those type of things. I mean, if AYB did it, I mean, you know, we just redid Diamond Four, which is a much bigger diamond, much more entail, you know, and it's $50,000. And, you know, we didn't come, didn't come back at that point to ask taxpayers for it. And I wouldn't expect AYB to be coming back for the other diamonds either. I would expect if there's a diamond to be redone, they would come back with funding in order to be able to do that. I mean, let's face it, you're taking care of roofs, you're taking care of fencing, you're taking care of maintaining it all summer long. You know, there's water, there's all kinds of stuff. We're spending a lot of village money already there. I just don't feel, I feel at some point the organizations need to step up and do that, to do, where's their stake in it?
Hey Rex, was this dirt compromise isolated to this diamond?
It was diamond number three and four that the bad material was on. We did three last year, and this would be the fix for number four.
And it was the village initially that had the procurement of said compromised material?
Yeah, we worked with AGSA to order the same mix that we always typically get. And unfortunately, once it was dropped and put into place, it wasn't up to that standard. We worked with it for a few years, and then again, the substandard material is only part of it. Again, part of it is just because there's been so much other stuff over the, you know, we haven't, we haven't done diamond number three or four, I mean, since I've been here. So, I mean, it's been the same dirt that's been worked and worked and worked, and people say, well, yeah, it's just dirt. But if you're a baseball guy like Jay is, he knows--
Makes a difference.
There's a difference. Dirt breaks down and becomes very powdery and very light, and it starts to blow away and swirl, and it's a whole, it gives balls a different bounce and slows the speed down, which is why every so often you need, you need to redo the fields. And I guess it's a philosophical question, quite honestly, Jay is, who should pay for that?
Well, by no means do we, I need to get into that philosophical, existential discussion about the bounce of a ball, very dirt. I just wanted to clarify that it was our procurement and that this is isolated to two diamonds, one of which has already been corrected. This would fix the problem so that all diamonds were in--
All diamonds should still be in good shape after this one.
Then I think we're pinching pennies here. It makes sense--
What's going to happen, though?
As the arbiter of this budget discussion, it's my chance on the mic right now, that we want to make sure that village facilities that are supported, whether by singular co-sponsored clubs or by folks coming to town for tournaments, have top-notch facilities. And this seems like we're just correcting something that maybe was not the best decision years ago to make sure that we have top-notch maintained facilities.
Jay, I will say, I know with Justin taking over for Kyle, I know there's a list of projects, like a capital plan, per se, that AYB has, and I know AGSA has met with me in the last couple of months to talk about some fairly large dollar amount projects that they would, they're kind of testing the waters on with us.
Yep.
So they, and I-- There's other co-sponsored organizations, but those are the two--
Right.
--that have a lot to do with, there's a lot of maintenance regarding those two.
And I totally get that fundraising is just no fun. It's a pain in the butt, and nobody wants to do it. And it's very easy just to come to the village and say, hey, you guys pay for this. Can't you pay for this for us? Yeah. But I still feel that those co-sponsored organizations, and yeah, there might have been, I understand what that dirt was, and I remember the bad batch that came in. But if we start, I mean, Diamond Five's going to be up next. It's going to need it, it's going to, you know, these diamonds wear down, is what it is. And we can say it's a substandard material, but that isn't the issue. Because what happens is, is after a while, the diamonds break down and they need to be replaced. And it is a capital, like, now, if we are going to take that on as a village all the time, we are going to see these type of numbers over and over and over again. And that's where I'm saying we're, you know, what part, what part of coal are we talking about? Because you spent a lot of money already out of your budget to do lots of things for all, for those organizations.
I think the thing we have to remember with this field, or any of the fields in Village Ashwabanon, they're village fields. It's our responsibility, it's no different than a soccer field or a basketball court or a tennis court. It's our responsibility to maintain those facilities and make sure they're safe and they're in good shape. And I feel that putting new ballfield material on a field is part of our maintenance, and we should take care of that, and it's our responsibility to do that. Now, the capital things, Jay, like, you know, you want to put in scoreboards, you want to raise the fence, you know, 20 feet, or you want to make it more beefier so you can put signs on it. I see that as something a co-sponsor or someone that's using that should step up and help with. But I just don't, I have no issue with the village putting the money into taking care of that field, because that's our job, in my opinion, to do that.
I understand it when it's $8,900, but if last--
$8,900.
$8,900. But if last year, if we'd had $50,000 in here, it'd have been a different discussion.
And, you know, with--
Because that diamond out there absolutely needed to be redone, and it was definitely a safety issue.
Yeah. I mean, upkeep of the fields is the village's responsibility, so I don't have an issue with it.
And guys, just a friendly reminder of Joel's phenomenal principles and guidelines for us reviewing the budget tonight. We're really not making the highest and best use of our time as a collective nitpicking a dollar amount, which represents quite literally .04% of our whole budget, so.
Don't disagree.
I think maybe what we can do is entertain this conversation going forward and, you know, entertain the park board too, because they do have some say in this. It's really truly a policy decision. If the policy of the board is that any maintenance upgrades or improvements are being paid for by co-sponsored organizations, then we would see a revenue item on that co-sponsored page to offset the expense. The expense would still be on us, but there'd be an offsetting revenue. So I think maybe what we can do is we can go back to these groups and let them know that there's possible conversation, but that we can certainly entertain that at a future park board and village board meeting from a policy standpoint. Because it will have an impact not only on AGSA, but all the other co-sponsored groups, whether it be soccer fields, baseball diamonds, and the like.
Other park and recreation questions?
One thing to note, sorry Rex, the new position, the park labor, is a 50-50 split between park maintenance and forestry. As you're looking through the budget items, that's how it's budgeted that way.
And that's how the position, we envision it being split as well, half forestry and half parks.
Yeah, yeah. And what we're partially going to do also, and Joel, maybe you and Brian can help me out with this just a little bit, but we have our park maintenance one position, which is doing the janitorial work at the community center. When he's done at the community center, then he typically go, he's 50% community center currently, 25 parks, 25 forestry. So when he's done with the community center, one of the thoughts is to try and save at least this year a little bit of time, and with the public works position not happening is Matt, who's the park maintenance one, will be going over to village hall and doing some of the simple fix of things, which keeps some of the public works people out in the field to do, to do their thing.
I do have one question. On page 87, 2024 objectives, partner with public safety about national night out. I thought national night out was going to be brought again as a policy-- as a policy discussion to the village board. Or is this gonna be separate?
It was kind of up in the air. I think when we talked about it, what was that, early, early summer, maybe, when we, when we discussed that, we had left it as it was a possibility. And I guess what I mean by that in the, in the budget is that if public safety chooses to partner with us on our neighborhood nights, in lieu of doing the national night out on the same night across the board, we're happy to work with them on that.
That might be a conversation we may need to have at a different meeting, just because of some of the comments that I got at national night out.
Yeah, we, we're happy, we're happy to partner with public safety if they choose to continue to do, you know, the national night out all on one night, that's fine too.
Would you like that, that line at least removed so it's not permanently out there for people to expect it to happen?
I would. I would just put, yeah, because I think we need to discuss that at a, at a village board level.
And Rex, it doesn't change, just so it's not there and.
Let it be gone.
He's just trying to be helpful.
I don't know that I really want to discuss anymore, Mary, so. It's not a sword I'm willing to die on. We'll just leave it as it is and we'll just move right on.
Any other parks, recreation, forestry questions? We have the park maintenance is where that $8,900 for the field is sitting in that budget, because that would be the maintenance crew. Community center, performing arts, Tracy, that's where those dollars are. With that, that's still outstanding in as far as how they're going to fill that, if they're gonna fill it. So, they'll work with us and making sure we're, we're in agreement. Forestry budget, and that would wrap up parks, recreation, forestry. Animal control, it's really human society road control within the village. And then economic development's the last budget. Again, that's where that new position is housed in there. Any other questions on the general fund? So, then the next section starting on page 106, or what do we call it, the special revenue funds. Typically what these represent are, they're funded through some other mechanism other than your tax levy, for the most part. We also, a number of years ago, added funds like the K9, some of the public safety programs, the K9, Dare, Citizen Academy Cadets Program, just to keep them kind of separate so they're a little more visible and can see kind of the ebbs and flows within those. But overall, these are the special revenue funds, the biggest, the two largest ones, the three we'll focus on, I should say, three, park development, United Service Agreement, and then the ARPA funds. So, park development is the first on page 108. Any questions on that?
And just in case you aren't aware, maybe this is more for Kelly and Chris, being relatively new on the board, the park development fund is revenues from park development fees that are paid for by new development. So, the developments that occur from that fund have to go towards servicing those new developments. You couldn't use it to replace the infield mix on an existing diamond. So, just, just to be clear on that. So, that, that pocket park in there is directly related to the new development in the village center area.
On the United Service Agreement, where are we timewise on that as far as, when does that, when does that get updated again?
So, we, we just went through and negotiated the agreement with them. So, this past year was the first full year under the new agreement.
Because were we, there was, wasn't any agreement for a couple of years.
There was, right. I think that the previous agreement expired end of 2020. And so, we were out of agreement for at least 18 months, if I recall correctly. So, it was a little, it expired before I arrived and then we were in the midst of COVID still. I believe we negotiated the resolve in 2021 and then it kind of went into effect 2022. We got our first set of payments in 2023 for the full term of the agreement. Patrick, you'll have to remind me, is it a five-year term? And then the, the overall value of the payments varies based on the value of property that is being identified within the agreement. So, there's not just a flat fee, it's based on an increase in valuation of the properties that are identified.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, within this fund, we've got a variety of capital equipment from public
Brian, what is the, you may have explained this before, field force equipment. What is that exactly?
Well, the, it's mobile field force and we are part of the Brown County Mobile Field Force Team. So, we have equipment that is either added or addition or expires and goes through just like the, just like any other equipment. So, we have to add that for those. They provide the training, we provide our equipment for our officers for that. Which may come in handy next year.
Unfortunately, huh?
So, then the other thing I want to focus on on special revenue was the ARPA funds. Is some questions on, on that. So, we've received all the funding that we're gonna get. And the, the rules essentially are that we have to expend the money by the end of 2024. So, we've got a number of other projects listed here that we wanted to, some of those were extensions, like the Exxon contract we agreed a number of years ago that we would pay out that five-year plan through our funds. But we've also added a few other projects within here. Joel mentioned the meridian barriers, the holiday decorations. And so, we're still finishing up a few from this year. Village Boardroom's one of those enhancements and things like that. So, there, the fine tuning, the exact dollars, you know, as things happen, we'll have to potentially come to the board again next year if there's anything unspent. But at this point, this, we would plan these projects to use up all the funds.
For the capital improvement plan, phase two, is that something we're gonna work on in-house or we contract out and have a consultant do that?
I can touch on that. So, you guys may be familiar, Ruker Milky was here about two or three months ago and they spoke about phase one of that capital improvement plan. Phase two, what it does is, phase one focused strictly on road condition and water main condition. Phase two will look at storm sewer and sanitary sewer and then also long-range cash flow for those enterprise funds. So, we have the three enterprise funds. The big question is, is our, our current sewer rates and stormwater ERU fees high enough to cover all of those costs that will be coming up in 2027 and beyond as we start reconstructing segments of roadway?
So, wanna, you know, that jumps ahead a little bit on the conversation, because when we get to enterprise funds, we'll, we'll certainly talk about this a little bit more. We went through a full water rate case within the last 18, 24 months. That has been fully implemented now through this year. However, obviously, over the course of time, we may want to consider, and this was advised to us by the PSC, PSC, to do routine water rate case studies, so the simplified rate cases. We hadn't done one in how many years? 16 years? Something like that. They had recommended every two or three years, go through a simplified rate case to keep your fee structure in place. So, we are looking at that. So, these, these capital phase studies are helping assist us in developing those rate cases. But we'll also need to take into consideration sanitary sewer. So, there's a couple of components to that. And again, we'll talk about a little bit more, I guess, in, in the enterprise funds. But we have our collection and distribution system. And this capital study will help us analyze our existing infrastructure. And that will result in a need to review our rates to make sure that we have sufficient cash flow to pay for the replacement of that infrastructure. But then you have the costs associated with new water. And those, we don't have any control over. That's dictated by their board and those costs get then passed on to us as consumers. So, when new water increases their sanitary treatment rate by 3, 5, 9% annually, those get basically eaten by our utility. And we need to really analyze that strategy and say, when we have costs forced upon our sanitary utility, we may need to consider passing that cost on to the consumer. Because right now, we're running into a negative cash flow situation on the sanitary sewer. So, be prepared that we'll have to have that difficult conversation about sanitary sewer rates in addition to the water rates that we just had.
Any other questions on special revenue funds? Next is the debt service funds. We just have one debt service fund. It houses, as in the beginning, we had those allocations of levy. We didn't have any new debt in 2023, so this is just paying off existing debt from a variety of projects, mostly TIF. Any questions on debt service? So, our next, next set of funds are called the capital project funds. We have street construction, village building, parks, recreation, public safety is zero, because most of that sits in the United Service. And then we have our TIDs. I will say on the TID, we don't typically put a lot in here since we don't really, unless they're known projects, we don't, we don't have anything in there. So, the revenue streams coming in are accurate and the expenditures would be either existing PEGO-type incentives that are out there or any debt needs that are, and that's what the transfer out, that's all debt transfers out into the debt service fund to pay off the debt, to just pay their own debt. So, first, capital project fund of street construction. We have the Milpave is the largest one. We are gonna look to do more, but we're gonna, what we can use and pay in TIF, we'll analyze that as into next year and make modifications if necessary. And that would come before the board. But this is the plan as a starting point. There are a few other projects that are listed in here as well. Any questions on street construction?
On that Packerland grant roundabout, who's gonna pay for the future upkeep and maintenance on that?
As far as the center of the roundabout goes?
Yeah.
So, that, that's an interesting question. So, under county agreement, the local municipality is responsible for maintaining the landscape, if you will, within the center of the roundabout. And where it gets interesting is there are three municipal jurisdictions that intersect that roundabout. The county will likely minimize the landscaping, because I'm sure no one will claim responsibility for it. So, if, if we can minimize it with some basic turf grasses and maybe some evergreen trees in the center, you know, it's something that we can, we can look at. Because we do have the bulk share of jurisdiction within the agreement between Hobart and Lawrence.
The next fund would be the village building fund. This one typically, we have a steady stream of 25,000 of a levy going in here. But this fund, we typically will apply any excess funds to based on the needs over the next few, you know, we'll look at the capital needs. So, at the end of the year, come to the board if we're gonna have excess funds to approve transfers. This would be one of the primary ones we use, because there's just seemingly a constant flow of maintenance and needs, whether that's a new roof or HVAC systems and things like that. And there are a number of projects listed here. Any questions on those?
Just a quick note in this particular fund and on page 137, there's a project identified on the middle of the page regarding village hall operations, study and renovations. So, that particular project is geared towards really looking in earnest to our village campus, if you will, from a program and maintenance standpoint as relates to this building, as well as in review of a study that had previously been done for public works for garage expansion. So, rather than going and advancing a project in public works and not truly understanding what our space needs are here, we felt it was appropriate to do a study to analyze this facility. Now, this particular project's gonna look at space needs for staffing, so programming space needs, but also look at system operations as well. This building is going on 30 years. And so, systems, HVAC, heating, plumbing, windows, roof, the whole nine yards as it relates to the structural components of this building or the operational components of this building need an analysis. If we are going to spend time, money and effort in either renovating, adding on, or doing any of that component, we really need to look at the operation side of the building too and figure out what needs to be replaced, what size, how is it gonna be designed, so on and so forth. So, this particular study is taking that, that architect and bringing them onboard to walk us through a process of identifying what improvements are necessary. There's a multiple, multitude of things related to space needs as it wait, as it relates to headcount, as it relates to customer efficiency as far as delivery of service, accessibility needs and modern accommodations as it relates to restrooms and things of that nature. And then we, we talked about the A-plus clinic earlier today as well. That space is, is pretty limited. They are routinely asking for new space or new accommodations to account for their growing demand. So, that would take into account a more full-fledged workplace clinic. I think that room was originally part of the conference room A and they just made it into a clinic. So, it's not wholly conducive to that type of doctoring activity.
One question that, I'm just curious, and you can say, I can't answer yet because we don't know yet. But when I saw this line item, I was curious if this study is also considering if this site is still the best location for these services, or if there may be a decision of, look, operationally, age-wise, not only does this building no longer serve the needs, perhaps this site isn't any longer the most central part of the village. I don't know. Would that be a consideration or is it really just operational within this site, this facility?
I think that, that the budget amount would be sufficient to support that, a real brief analysis on that. With that being said, we have not drafted the formal request for proposals or qualifications. That will come at a future meeting to actually draft the formal and get approval from the board prior to solicitation. So, if that is a desire of the village, then we can certainly incorporate that as part of the conversation.
Any other questions on village building fund? Okay, we'll move on to parks, recreation, capital projects fund. There's two items there, the Waterford Park Playground and the Canterbury Park. Should be noted that the primary funding, this, part of that United Service Agreement is, there's a line item where $50,000 is allocated to parks, recreation for capital projects. And that is, that's that $50,000 and a governmental line that's in there, what you see in the budget.
Say that again, Greg.
So, within the United Service Agreement, there's an additional $50,000 on top of what was in the other fund. There's, is an allocated portion of $50,000 go directly to parks, recreation for this, these types of.
So, it'll be used for this, okay.
See, I think it's amazing that Waterford is already 23 years old.
I was just thinking that.
You know, but it is.
When I came in 1993, it was there. So, it was before 93. So, it's old. It's really old. Well, we have a new Gaga pit over there. There's a new Gaga pit, isn't there? Yes, and it gets used like crazy. Chris has been in there like crazy.
So, we'll move on then to enterprise funds. Again, as Joel alluded to earlier, these are three utilities that act like businesses. So, you may see a little bit different terminology used, such as, you know, operating income and loss that we don't use in governmental type funds. But overall, primary revenue stream here is fees. The staff is allocated. They have the five workers within the utilities that are split between the water and sewer. So, their time is allocated that way, when you see those line items. Any questions on the water utility? Questions on the sewer or stormwater utilities?
If not, then we'll move on to the, oh.
One quick question, Timber Lane culvert replacement, where actually is that one on Timber? On the page 167 for the stormwater utility.
We walk over it almost every day. It's. Yeah, let me get the closest crossroads here before I, it's.
Where the two cul-de-sacs come off, then it's, then that's where the creek comes through right there.
Yep. That came through village board, didn't it?
That's what I thought. Okay. That's okay, Brian, got it. Thank you.
Okay, Oak Crest is the, the first road that's ringing a bell to me, but I want to make sure, but as long as you guys understand, it's, it's a large, it's not.
Yeah, there's the two cul-de-sacs are right there and then the next one would be Ken.
Correct. It is, right, right near Ken. Ken and Oak Crest are correct. Thanks everyone. Still kind of the new guy a little bit, learning all street names, so.
And then the last section would be the internal service funds. Again, these are, all three of these charged back to the individual departments based on the usage within. So health and dental, we talked a lot about that leading up to this meeting. So all of those discussions that were had, they're, they're in here as, as was presented, premium rates and, and things like that. And then the public, the, excuse me, the equipment replacement fund lists out all of the requests. Again, these items had been brought to the board prior this year, so we're following that plan as was laid out in, in those discussions as well. Any questions on the internal service funds? If not, then that would be, that would be it. So any questions at all? Anything else, anything anybody wants to discuss or bring up, talk about? So otherwise the, I believe the motion, I don't have it in front of me, is to approve basically as, as laid out. The next steps would then be on the 28th at the village board meeting, we'll, we'll have a public hearing and then there'll be a formal adoption through resolution of, of this budget.
I think you guys did a great job, all you guys, I mean, for what you came up with and you're talking about the addition of employees and services that are needed and everything, so. And there's also some looks to how are we going to get to the future and that within the community development area, within marketing strategy, things going forward and where's the community going? So thank you guys, done a great job. Public safety with, you know, adding the additional people that are needed because yeah, it's growing, we're going up, but we're growing. So yeah, I will make the motion to approve this budget as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget as presented. Any other comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Thank you, thank you everyone. Like I said, thanks especially to the staff for doing such a great job. Okay, items for next agenda. We have items for next agenda on the 28th. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried, thank you everyone.
This conference is no longer being recorded.